And Board of Education Regular Meeting, Monday, September 10th, 2007 at 5:30 PM. Thanks everyone for joining us today. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you please stand.
My pledge to our citizens is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on with the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
We have a motion by Brian. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. At this time, I'd like to welcome our new board member, Erica Cherry-Ear. Erica, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Okay. We look forward to your contributions to the board. Also, to my left here is not the ghost of Mr. Minnick, but he's here live. And Dick, we're certainly glad to have you back. I know you've gone through quite an ordeal and we're more than happy to have you here.
Glad to be back, thank you.
Also in your board packet, you'll see the 2007-08 Board of Education Committee Membership Revisions. We tweaked this a little bit with Erica coming on board. I think all the board members have had a chance to review this, so if you have any questions, please see me or Mary, otherwise we'll leave it as currently stands. Next is approval of the August 14th, 2007 Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes. Entertain a motion for their approval.
So move.
We have a motion by Tom. Second by Brian. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Do we have correspondence? Sandy?
Actually, I don't know.
There is no correspondence.
No.
Next are the reports. Sandy's going to present the ACT and the Advanced Placement Results. Sandy?
Thank you. On page five of your board packet, you will find an update. I was here in July to do a testing report, and there are two pieces that have come in since then, and that's the report on ACT and also the report on Advanced Placement. And you'll note in your packet, just a little background for our audience on ACT, that is a test often given to 11th and 12th graders, or 11th and 12th graders take and participate in that assessment. It's a curriculum-based assessment that's a measure of college readiness, for the most part. And it's scored on a 1 to 36 scale, and it's required by many universities and colleges for entrance. It's the main assessment used here in the Midwest. And if we go back and work our ways to the current, in Hudson, the composite average score in '04-'05 was 22.5, then last year in '05-'06, 23.2. And we're very proud to announce that for the '06-'07, we are now at 23.7 as our average composite. And we want to note that this truly is representative of our work as a system, K-12, in getting our students better prepared for college and beyond high school. And so we're very proud of our K-12 system in getting our students ready for this exam and the exemplary average score of 23.7. If you heard our theme from the opening workshop, you were going, "We're moving on up." And so here we are. Advanced placement scores also came in, and we offer currently nine advanced placement courses. And we had 353 students enrolled in AP courses during the second semester. There's a little fluctuation between first and second semester. And we are very proud to announce that in art, the drawing portion of the assessment, Art 2D Design, English Language and Composition, Calculus Psychology, they were all 100 percent of the students who took the test passed. And in AP, there's a 1 to 5 score, and getting a score of a 3, 4, or 5 is considered a passing score. Not all, but many of the colleges then will accept that score and use it as then coursework viewed as college-level work. So in essence, they come in with college credits into their university. And then chemistry had a 93 percent passage score. Now, we did a little digging into the past in that last slide that you see in your packet. And you can see that the number of students, yes, our number of students are increasing just naturally, but I think this is a little above and beyond that. In 2005, we had 163 students participate. 208 tests were, or 208 students took AP exams in 2006, and we're up to 215 in the 2007 exams. And you can also see the number of exams. So again, we have numbers of students, but many of them take more than one AP exam. So in 2005, we had 240 exams. 2006, 296. And then 2007, 327. And even with more students taking tests, then you can see in that final column, 86 percent passing rate in 2005, 87 percent passing rate in 2006, 89 percent passing rate in 2007. Again, an indication of system-wide K-12 that we're better preparing students for those kinds of rigorous courses. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Any questions for Sandy on those reports, ACT, AP? It's very encouraging, especially to see the trend upward and the number of students with passing scores. And thank you to our teaching staff as well for their hard efforts in helping students achieve those passing scores. If no other questions, we'll move on the agenda. The Examination of Accounts of the School District Treasurer, Tom?
I refer you to the pages 6 through 10 in your board packet. And just reviewing the financials for the district, the proposed budgets for '07 and The, I'd ask you to turn to page 7 as a reference for some of the comments that I'd like to initially make. The '07-'08 proposed preliminary budget levy that we're proposing is, will show to be actually $78,000 less than the 2004-'05 levy by comparison. The mill rate percentage change is down again in six consecutive years now to $6.93 per thousand compared to last year's mill rate of $7.16 per thousand, which represents a 3.14 percent decrease. The $6.93 estimate mill rate is the lowest in 24 years. And in comparing a school district to other districts within our CISA district, Hudson ranks 33 out of 39 districts as the lowest mill rate. Statewide, Hudson ranks 360, excuse me, 326 out of 426 total districts with respect to the mill rate. So while the mill rate has gone down, the district enrollment has gone up. Over the past 10 years, the district's enrollment has gone up 42 percent, meaning 3,724 students in 1997-98 compared to this year's preliminary first week enrollment of 5,299 students. At the same time, the mill rate's gone up, gone from $10.47 to $6.93. Over the past 14 years, the district's enrollment has gone up 57 percent, meaning 3,371 students in '92-93, the mill rate went from $18.45 to $6.93. So this is very good news for us. And I think it's a compliment to the district, the way that's been managed, and we're very happy about these kind of financials. Also, you'll see on page 6 as a way of comparison, the comparison of cost per student that the Hudson School District has compared to other districts that are similar in size in enrollment and are considered high-performing districts. So we're proud to announce that we have a high-performing district and a low-cost district, which I believe is of high value. If you'll then turn back to page 7, I'll just reference some of these things. At the bottom of page 7, there's a preliminary valuation for taxing district. This is simply a breakout of the taxing districts within our districts. You can see the City of Hudson, Town of Hudson, Town of St. Joe, Town of Troy, Village of North Hudson, and so forth, each with their individual valuations and change increases, or changes in the case of North Hudson, and the valuation projections for '07-'08, and the percentages of the payable, I guess, as you might say, from each district towards the total levy. So back to the mill rate on equalized valuation piece just above that, we're showing valuation increase of 4.23 percent at the bottom for '07-'08, which is a, obviously a lower number than has been in the past, but with the current financial positions, our situation in the marketplace, this is what we believe is going to be the facts. At the same time, the levy is going from $24,037, excuse me, $24,037,800 in '06-'07 to an increase of less than 1 percent at $24,267,230. That brings us to that mill rate of 6.93. So. Page 8 shows the revenues and the expenditures by funds, and I'd just draw your attention to the change, the fluctuation you'd see at the bottom line of revenue going from $79,784,205 in '06-'07 compared to what is a revised budget of $64,692,699. The purpose of this, and the reason for this, is line item 39R and 49R, which show capital-related revenue that's related to the district offices and the new elementary school, which will not be the case in '07 and '08. If you look then to the expenditures by fund, you'll see that just the opposite is true between the comparisons of '06 and '07 and '07 and '08. '06 and '07 has a total expenditure of $59,378,109 compared to projected budget expenditures of $88,461. Again, if you'll look at line item 39E and 49E, you'll see the differences there, as well as there's $3 million in the general fund of 10E that relate all to the elementary school and the district offices' loans that'll be payable during those years, during that year. Okay? Page number nine is a listing of all the outstanding debt issues as of June 30th, '07. And I'd just draw your attention to the last three on that page. The bond anticipation promissory notes, the general obligation bonds, and the general obligation promissory notes, there all relate, again, to the loans and the bonds for the capital items of the district office and the elementary school. And finally, not finally, page 10, I guess it will be finally. Page 10 is our balance sheet. This shows simply the assets and liabilities of the district. Assets equalling $22,427,257, which you can see is made up there of $12,87,640, $12,87,640 in cash and investments, and receivables of $10 million and a little more. In terms of liabilities, they come in the line items of payables and other liabilities of $1,215,475, and withholdings and net payroll of $3 million, leaving a total liability of $4,269,926, which gives us a fund balance of $18,157,331, of which $4,412,000 is unreserved for the purposes of the capital projects that we have underway. Uh-oh. Got to look for Mary.
These are designated for capital.
Oh, I'm sorry. Strike that last unreserved part. They're reserved, these are reserved dollars that are reserved for the capital projects of the school district, the district offices and the elementary school. That's the $4,412,000. I think I said unreserved. So, my apologies.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Yeah, the 4.4 is earmarked dollars, leaving us with $13,745 with the remaining fund balance. And as I've said this before, that's not all cash in the balance, it's not all cash in the bank, with a large share of that being represented in accounts receivable. So, thank you, Tom. Any other, any questions, comments for Tom?
I got two comments.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom. Just the more just comments. So I just want to keep eye on what we're spending our money on, and just continue to kind of challenge the district as we move forward on $34,000 in printing and binding, $66,000 in paper, $407,000 in textbooks, and just say that's money that, we've got to spend a certain amount of that all the time, but I'll just continue challenging using technology so we can do less of that and more about moving the district forward and using of, you know, IT assets, you know, especially for learning for our students. So that was my one comment. The second comment is this, Tim, have we got this thing like on the website? Can people see this thing on the website?
Our, our plan is to put it on the website after tonight's meeting.
Great. How was it?
Thanks, Brian.
Mr. President, could I just make a comment regarding Brian's thought regarding, it might be good, it's just a thought that it might take a comparison, might look at a comparison analysis of costs for technology versus these costs that you just identified? I mean, just as an initial-
We should try to get on the website and so people can see for-
Or in place of.
Yep.
School books or whatever.
I think that'd be a good, I think that'd be a good start. Just, it's not a call for action right now, I just wanted to just point out, and we're always thinking about it, you know, because how we spend our money now and the future should be different than how we spent it, you know, three or four years ago.
Good point, Brian. Thank you. And, Tim, I agree, I think this is information, after tonight, we should try to get on the website and so people can see for themselves what we're, and do we have any copies in the back, or is this the agenda? Is there?
Of the annual meeting.
Okay. Okay. Moving on. Topics for action, consent items. Personnel as well as expenditures. Does someone have the expenditures amount?
I'll make a motion that we accept the personnel items and move the Director of Financial Services authorized to pay expenditures in the amount of $2,95,894.73.
We have a motion by Mark. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Next item, topic for action, is the award Rivercrest Elementary School contracts from bid package two. Tim, are you going to lead off on this?
Sure. We have Sam Stotts here from Hoffman, our district's architects and construction management firm. And bid package number two, the results, tabulations of the bids have come in. This is for the structures package. Most of these are going to be concrete, masonry, paving, landscaping, and those types of items. And with that, I'm going to let Sam go ahead and talk a little bit about the results of the bid package.
Thanks, Tim. What you have in front of you is what we would call the structures package. Essentially, we've already bid out a site package, if we recall, that had the utilities and the earthwork. We're now planned and prepped for the site work, or for the structures package, which would be division two through five, the excavation of the footings, some landscaping, the concrete, then the masonry, steel package. And then as part of that, we wanted to get the underground going as well, so we have the fire protection and the plumbing. What you have in front of you, I believe, should be the bid tabulation for bids due August 28th, 2007. On those, there are all of the bids that we received, and for each division in the category, you have a highlighted contractor, which would be the contractor that we're recommending. The contracts were based, and the recommendations are based off of three important factors that we consider, which is cost and the quality and the schedule management. Based off of those qualifications that we did on the contractors is how we got to the highlighted contracts that we're recommending.
Thanks, Sam. Do you want to speak to the two or three items that, for the most part, as you look at these bid proposals, we're going with the least expensive proposal for each division with a few exceptions. Do you want to speak to those briefly?
Certainly. If you take a look on the first page under landscaping, there is a contractor Environmental Landscape Management that is not the low-cost. However, we felt that they would be the best fit for the project because of the two factors of quality and schedule. We have some past experience with Lake Shore Cleaners, it's a distance project. In the past, we've had some issues with their ability to manage a project at a distance, as well as some of the quality wasn't quite what the expectations were. So with those reasons in mind, we made the recommendation for Environmental Landscape Management, which is a local contractor who is actually down the way and would be able to, we believe, better service the project. The second one is under the masonry portion.
Sam, just on that one, do you want to talk about Prairie Restorations and what that bid includes?
Sure. Thanks, Mary. Prairie Restorations was a partial bid. You'll notice they're significantly lower. It was an incomplete bid, and they did not have all the scopes of work that were required, so it did not meet the specifications. Masonry, which I believe is the second page, top of the page, we have two contractors that are within 5 percent of each other, and the recommendation to go with Vonisek and Schiffer was, because of, again, the quality and the schedule, we've had some past experience with the low contractor that made the decision to recommend Vonisek because of the quality, as well as some of the schedule concerns that we had. Vonisek does have the manpower available and would be able to meet the schedule, and this is a tight timeline, so we wanted to take some additional consideration because of that factor. Was that all the questions?
Any questions for Sam?
Mr. President, I just, I guess, is there a question, Brian? Because I can hold on.
Well, just the next one down, the furnish and install, and that was pretty, are we there yet to talk about that?
Sure. That's, actually what that is, is there is a furnish and install price for steel structures, which is the 609, which was actually the low combination of the two. The other contractor, Red Cedar and Dahl, would have been a combination package, and they're actually just a little bit over $1,000 over what the combination package from steel structures would be.
Okay. Okay, Tom?
Mr. President, I just wanted to, I want to make sure that it's understood by this board that the Finance Committee met and had good discussion about this just prior to the meeting tonight. We also had discussion about whether we are on budget are, to this point, with these recommended bids. And as a group, we are, are a little below, I think, is what I understood. Is that correct?
We are on budget.
On budget, okay. Sorry, on budget. And secondly, that we're on schedule. So, and with that, there was good discussion with the Finance Committee. We don't let these guys go off the hook very easily. So with that, we, as a Finance Committee, by consensus are recommending this bid package approval.
Is that a motion you're putting forward?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second by Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Thanks, Sam, for your report.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Spring 2008 High School Choir Trip to Costa Rica. Nancy, you're going to address that?
Okay, yep, I'll start. The proposed high school choir trip to Costa Rica is a new endeavor for the Hudson School District. This is the first school-sponsored student trip to another country. We will be looking for your approval of the trip, given certain contingencies that will develop in the presentation. High School Principal Ed Lucas will make some introductory remarks. The High School Choir Director Andy Hayes is going to provide some highlights of the proposed trip and the benefits for our students. I will outline and recommend a contract with the parents and students, as well as certain policy and procedural developments. And then we'll collectively address any questions that you have before you consider approval of the trip. So I'll introduce High School Principal Ed Lucas.
One has to bring their fan club on.
At least you have one.
Good evening and thank you. Andy Hayes, the choir director, and I have been talking for quite some time about options for the choir trip for this year. This is the year that the choir is up on their rotation. And we've explored some opportunities, taking a look at some trips in Europe, domestic trips, and we have, Andy has come up with the trip from Costa Rica. And many other schools in the metro area are taking trips that go to Europe and travel abroad. And we think that this is a great opportunity for our students to enjoy a cultural trip and a new and unique cultural experience. It's traveling on new ground for us, so we have some things to consider, and Nancy Sweet has been tremendous help in moving over some of those obstacles. But we look upon this trip as a great cultural experience for our students. As we look to move into developing the strategic plan for this district, it is in line with the plan of the global economy and globalization that is taking place today. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Andy Hayes, who is going to talk to you about the specifics of the trip.
As Ed said, this is an important endeavor for us. This trip will enhance the regular curriculum of music education through various professional and performance venues. This tour will open many opportunities for the high school choirs to perform before a diverse and multicultural audience. Some of the important highlights of this trip, in addition to visiting some volcanoes, taking a tour to a small coffee plantation, a performance in the San Jose National Theater, the real important aspects of this trip would be, one, a clinical experience to provide an opportunity for high school students to rehearse with a respected choral conductor from the Costa Rica area. Also, a concert and performance exchange with a local high school choir and/or collegiate ensemble. This performance will allow the high school students to interact with students from another culture. Activities can include a joint rehearsal, performance, a question-answer time to discuss her very different choral music educational backgrounds. And very important to this trip is, along with just the musical and educational growth, a tour of this caliber provides an opportunity for team building- a tour of this caliber provides an opportunity for team building, emotional, and also social growth, and a heightened awareness of a foreign culture. That's the real reason why I proposed this trip to Costa Rica.
Thanks, Andy. Do we have, anyone have a question?
Okay, just a couple more, just a couple more things to cover here. Pages 36 through 38 of your board pack was developed by our legal counsel and does include an outline of considerations relative to the development of a contract between the district and the parents, the students. Such things as waiver and indemnification agreement, eligibility requirements clarified, certain deadlines established in that contract, criteria for the cancellation of the trip, should that be necessary, medical care, required accommodations, the specification in the contract of the trip rules. And the, our legal counsel is in process of developing, actually, the agreement, the contract. But those are the, that would be the content of such a contract. Procedurally and policy, we do not currently have a policy that specifically addresses student trips to other countries. And so that would be one of the contingencies. In addition to the parent contract with the district, we would suggest policy and procedure being developed prior to the trip, which happens in March. And I think we could, we could have that in place. And procedurally, we would review all of the documents associated with the trip and negotiate, if necessary, certain aspects of those documents specified on page 38. Relative to the chaperones, we'd have in place background checks, training, rules for chaperones as well. And Tim Erickson has been already in touch with our insurance provider, who would be reviewing and assuring that we would have sufficient coverage for a trip of this nature. This is new territory, and so not all of what's written here applies directly and specifically to this trip, but certainly could apply to other trips in the future. So the contingencies would be to have signed parent contracts, and, secondly, the procedures and policy in place. And, thirdly, some assurance from our insurance provider that we are sufficiently covered. And now we'll entertain questions you might have, the three of us, appropriately.
Brian?
Yeah, three questions. First of all, overall, I'm a huge supporter of things like this. To get our students out and into other cultures is so important. It's probably, it's a huge, it should be a huge focus of our district as we move forward. So just a couple of questions. Why Costa Rica, first of all?
Well, my first thought was Europe, obviously, with its strong musical heritage. Unfortunately, the cost to travel to Europe is extremely expensive now. And when I spoke with Janet at Group Travel Directors, Accolade Travels, which put together this proposal, I said, Janet, where are choirs, bands, and orchestras traveling to now to get that diverse cultural experience? And Costa Rica, she said, was the number-one place.
Okay, and then accolades, it looks like the organization putting this together?
Correct. I use accolades previously when we traveled to San Antonio.
So they have a good track record?
They have a wonderful background with trips.
And so we've done all the due diligence on them and everything else that?
Pardon?
You've used them before and done due diligence on them, so. And then my own other comments is, we want to do, you know, this is me personally, not for the board, but I think we should do more of these things. So the amount of exposure you guys have, both the students, right, and the chaperones, is incredibly intense. And so if this thing was approved, there'd be a lot of eyes on, you know, how we do and hopefully come back with flying colors. But I can't stress the importance that this, how much exposure this would have is, you know, and hopefully it's super positive, so.
Thanks, Brian. Any other questions? Cindy?
So you're relying on this, this organization, then, to do all the pre-scouting? You're not going to take a trip down there and look around and?
Correct. The proposal that you have in front of you is a template of what they would do for any other organization. Once it's approved by the school board, I can give her the go-ahead, and then she solidifies the performance venues, where we perform, who we work with, what schools do we go to.
And do you have familiarity with the choral conductor down there who is well-known?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay, so?
We're still in the process, yeah.
Okay, so you will, as a part of the process, ensure that this really is a quality?
Most certainly.
Okay, and then this, it, is there potential for sort of reversing the direction of this? I think it's really important that our students go there. I think it's just as important that our community here experienced the same, some of those same benefits of global awareness. And so would there be discussion about reversing the direction of that trip?
Certainly, you know, going down and performing with a high school or collegiate ensemble down there, taking the information gathered at that meeting, bringing it back to this community, and presenting it in a public forum, such as our performances here in the Hudson community.
And any potential for them to come here and perform for us?
You know, this stage is always open. Anyone can perform here.
Any other questions, Mark?
Just, I guess, more comments. I guess I find it very hard to believe that this is going to be the first school-sponsored trip to a foreign country. I didn't know that. I guess my response is, it's about time. I'm very enthusiastically supporting this. And as Mr. Bell had said, I agree. I hope we do more of these. I think we need to reach out. It certainly is a, you know, it's a global community. And I think I did see in this, too, that, I'm sure I'll go without saying, that the students will be raising the funds for this trip themselves.
Correct. I'm trying to find various fundraising opportunities for students to help pay for the financial responsibility of this trip, selling candy, possible student talent show, other ways to acquire some financial support for this trip.
Sure. Well, terrific. Rest of the luck to you.
Thank you.
There, if I could add just a little bit here, too, in case you have this question, there is a, there is some district cost to the trip in that there will be one of the high school administrators accompanying the students, and that cost will be borne out of the high school budget.
Okay.
Thanks, that answered my question. But also, I have another question as well, or a couple of them. What's the timeframe in which this is happening? I may have missed that.
March 12th to the 20th. So it's during spring break.
It's during spring break, okay. This number of chaperones, I mean, how many students are going?
It depends. Once the trip's approved, we'll have a better idea of how many students want to participate. And I think policy is one chaperone per 15 students.
For 15, okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify something. Hudson High School students have gone on trips to other countries, but they have not been district-sponsored. And as a result, it may have been during the summer or during a break. You probably read about the trip that happened this summer to Germany. And so that's why this trip is a little different, because we are starting school-sponsored trips.
Okay, I, finally, I have a few questions, being somewhat familiar with band trips. The one thing, and I've seen the benefit of these trips firsthand with students and the excitement associated with it. The one thing that always bothers me with these types of trips are the inability of certain students, that just can't come up with, you know, the $2,000 to do the trip. So I guess my comment would be, you know, if you're able to find good fundraisers or opportunities for students to be able to, every student has the opportunity to go on this trip, because it really sounds like a great opportunity, and I'm sure you would feel bad, you know, as well as if there is, you know, some student for financial reasons just can't make it.
And I'm willing to find every financial means to help any student that wants to attend. Not every student will, though, and that is their choice. But if a student wants to attend and needs some financial support, I'll do everything that I can to help them.
Good. The other question I have is, you have a list of, or there are, there is a list of not included items, rental of large instruments, piano, media, advertising, passport. Do we, but I don't see, like, the other page, sort of a bottom-line cost total. Do we have a sense of what those costs are going to be in two?
We won't have any of those extra fees as far as a piano or large instruments. The total fee per student, per individual participating would be $19.40.
Okay. So are there additional costs other than what Nancy mentioned in terms of an administrator going along, that the school district would be expected to?
No.
No, okay.
Andy, isn't there chartering a bus from Hudson to the airport?
We did speak about that, so I'm not sure what that cost would be for a chartered bus to go from the high school to the airport, to make sure that all students arrived in a timely and safe fashion.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you, Ed, thank you, Andy. Good presentation. At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the spring 2008 choir trip to Costa Rica.
So moved.
We have a motion by Cindy.
I'll second that.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Good luck, students and staff. We'll move on to the 2007-08 additional staffing requests. Nancy, it's back to you.
Okay, and there are two requests described on page 39 and page 40 in your board book. The first is a request for middle school staffing due to enrollment growth. We are asking for up to 2.5 FTE middle school teachers in core subject areas if the enrollment growth maintains or increases. Alternatively, if the enrollment were to decline, then the FTE request would proportionally decline as well. But our, this is the situation right now. As of the 6th of September, there were 1,165 students registered at the middle school, and this is a growth of 55 students since last school year. I mean, roughly the equivalent of two full classes. The building capacity is 1,125, and the administration at the middle school, Dan Koch and his associates, determined via registration that there are 36 periods of core subject instruction in grades six, seven, and eight, where the student enrollment exceeds our class-size guidelines of 23 to 27, so over 27, in 36 periods in core subjects, our language arts, reading, math, social studies, and science. The, the, the core subjects in which the guidelines are exceeded most often, and, and to the greatest extent, are math, social studies, and science. And that's where the, the additional staff at this point in time would go. And there are some difficulties or complexities, actually, to scheduling and assigning the staff that have to do with scheduling, and in some cases have to do with space. But this is the need and the cost, and this would be for the two-and-a-half teachers, would be estimated at $92,525. And that's, we don't know who they would be at this time, but that's kind of in the middle of the schedule. So it could be less, and it could be, could be a little more, but that's just an average so that you have some understanding of that. The personnel committee did consider this request, and we did some additional work after that meeting to try to get closer to the FTE.
Thank you, Nancy.
So that's the first one.
Any questions for Nancy? I take it the personnel committee has reviewed this.
We were unanimous in our support of these additional staffing. And I just, by way of comment, just like to remind everyone that our class size is probably one of the things our community has been most strongly supportive of in polls that we've taken. It's very high. I don't remember the number, but it's something that our community definitely embraces, and I think this board should try to adhere to those guidelines.
Comment also from the personnel committee, there was some talk about the operational execution of this in terms of physical classrooms and the house concept, you know. So I imagine you're working through all those complexities?
Right, right. Such things as two teachers working together, break out into the common areas for instruction, but maintaining, you know, high expectations, quality instruction for all of the students, but not creating another house at this point, or part of a house. Not creating that, because, again, the need's span all three grade levels, mostly sixth and eighth. Seventh is a little bit smaller.
Okay, Mary?
And I think that's one of our difficulties as we look to this year and then into the future, of increases enrollment at the middle school. The program itself, with a house concept that has been very well-supported by our parents and has well-met the needs, learning needs of our students, social and emotional needs as well. When we add teachers in this kind of configuration without space for another house, and that's a very difficult operation for us, and we do lose a portion of that concept, that program. So it isn't that we can just keep adding additional teachers at the middle school and put them here, there, and everywhere, without losing some of the program, the positives of the program. And we asked Dan Koch, Principal Dan Koch, to work on how, in the short term, for this coming year, knowing that we have more students, how to balance that so we still preserve the positives of the middle school program, and yet add staff and meet the learning needs of the students, and support teacher work as well at a time when we are asking, not asking, but requiring higher expectations for learning for our students and for our staff.
Thank you, Mary. In looking at the enrollment, last year we were at capacity, Nancy, it looks like, and then now this year we're over capacity.
Yeah, there are, you know, comparing this time last year, where we're 55 students over last year, and now over the capacity of 1,125.
Okay.
So what you're saying is that we, up until this enrollment, we actually had capacity left at the middle school?
Yes.
This is our first?
Yeah.
Over the, over the capacity?
Yeah, and that's looking, you know, of course, at the entire building and all of the space available, and the, the enrollment by classroom, of course, is scattered among the sixth, seventh, and eighth, but it does, it does present space problems for the, for them to deliver their program.
How far are we over the projection? I mean, we, when did we expect to hit the capacity at the middle school?
I can take that.
Go ahead, Mary.
The capacity of the middle school is 1,125. Last year, 3rd Friday in September, we were 1,110 students, so just under capacity. Certainly, we're 1,165 first week. That may hold, may not, may go up. We don't know that, so that's the plus 55. And Hazel Reinhardt, who has projected capacity, not projected capacity, but projected enrollment for this year, had 1,138 students at the middle school. The thing we just need to keep in mind when you think about capacity, when you are at that number, it makes sense if every student's in the right place. And that doesn't happen. As you can look at these numbers, we have difficult classes, or larger classes, not spread evenly throughout the school. difficult classes or larger classes, not spread evenly throughout the school, but in various pockets. So when you look at capacity number, oftentimes in the industry, they talk about being a percentage less than the actual capacity of the building to give you flexibility. So we are really pushing the limits when we are at capacity in a school.
Comment, where are we at the high school right now in terms of enrollment? Do we have that number?
I'm going to give that all in the annual report. Do you want that now, or?
Well, just make a comment then, whatever the number is.
Okay. We're just, essentially, we're even. Does that help?
Brian, you're sort of ahead of us most of the meeting, so that's great.
So my only comment is with the, with the housing situation across America and, you know, and all the for-sale signs currently as you drive around, it's interesting to see that, you know, we have a gain of 55 students, which is only going to go through the system, right? So just a comment about our long-term space requirements at the high school, so, which I'm sure you've all made those inferences, but I'm master of the obvious this evening, so.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, I could comment on the second request because there, it's presented as one item on the agenda for your.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. So the second request is on page 40, and that is for a six-hour-per-day van driver for 178 student days, actually. And, and this request comes forward to you because of the, in general increase secondary student enrollment over a several-year period now, and the transition activity that is required for students with disabilities. And as that growth and activity requirement has materialized, we have been following, monitoring the cost of supporting, supporting the transition activities. And we do that in a couple of different ways. We've got the taxis, we've got shuttles that Safeway provides to us. And we did purchase a couple of years ago the van that a, one of our teachers and an assistant drives, which worked for a while, but no longer is, is a really good solution. So the, the request would transport students with disabilities during the school day, between the school building and the transition house, to jobs, to community sites. And also would transport students who are temporarily excluded from school for disciplinary reasons for their tutoring. And we do have also some students identified who have been accelerated in subject areas, actually, and go from middle to high school for certain coursework, or from elementary to middle. And this could provide for them as well. So we could have our teacher teach more, we could have our assistant spend more time supporting the activities of the students at the transition house. We could save money. And that's provided in your document. The cost would be approximately $26,000 for the, the van driver, and we would shift some of the district funds that are used for the taxi, the shuttle, et cetera, appropriately to our federal grant. So we will save, we would save money, and we would also provide a much more efficient way of delivering these services to our students with disabilities.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Any questions?
Let me just add to that, just for point of clarification. In Personnel Committee, we discussed this at some length, and the, the, the cost for this is $26,000, but beyond that $26,000, it's about $20,000 in savings up and beyond the cost of this. So it's not a $20,000 savings against a $26,000 cost. It's more like a $20,000 savings, free and clear up and beyond the cost of the program. It's really a much more efficient way of providing these services.
And some of that, just to be real clear about it, is, is really due to, it would cost us less money actually than shuttles and taxis one-on-one. And it is the shifting of the dollars, the expenditures from district funds to grant funds. Very appropriate. This is the initiation of a new way of delivering services. And it's very appropriate to use the district, the, the grant funds this way.
Okay, thanks. Nancy, any other comments? Tom?
Nancy, so the teachers, the teacher has been driving in the past, is it?
I'll let Barbara talk a little bit to answer your questions.
Oh, I guess I should have one then.
Yes. Oh, I thought you did.
Well, I guess it was a question. It was answered quickly. The teacher has been the driver in the past, so now.
To some extent, yes.
To some extent.
Yeah, to more than we would like.
So speak to a little bit about how, what, how that time will be used now by the teacher.
The teacher will have new.
Turn on that.
I thought I had.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Closer? Okay. Sorry, how's that, okay?
That's good.
What the teacher will be able to do, which was part of the original intent of the transition teacher, is to find placements for job and related experiences in the community. That'll be a minimum of two hours a day that'll free him up to do that, coupled with he will have more opportunities to do some actually hands-on job coach, which again is going back to the original intent of the position, that now is kind of a catch-as-catch-can because he has to get somebody from here to there.
Mm-hmm. Good. Okay, thank you.
Just one more comment. Come back. And this is some that Mark Kajner shot in us at the Personnel Committee, kind of drilled through this in pretty good detail, so.
Okay. What I'd like to propose, if it's all right with the board, is if we entertain a motion for approval of both of the staffing requests, or the multiple staffing requests that we have here with the, the middle school as well as the, the van driver.
So moved.
I just want to clarify the motion to include what Nancy spoke about but isn't written here, that if the middle school numbers go down somewhat, that we would prorate or proportion the staff and be allowed to do that and make a decision. It may not just be the same percentage, because we have to look at how we would actually service students. But we just want to make sure you have agreement on that as well.
Good point, so.
Are you separating both? Because I, I'm struggling with the first request on the staff at the middle school, and would prefer to have them separate motions.
Do we, do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
I retract my motion.
Okay, we, we've taken, taken the original motion off the floor. Mr. Minnick, would you, or someone else, would like to break these motions into two different requests?
Well, I would make a motion to support the request for the six-hour-per-day van driver for 178 school days.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved for the addition of the van driver. Now, if we go back to the middle school staffing request, is there a motion for that item?
I move that we approve the hire of up to 2.5 FTE middle school teachers in core subject areas contingent upon current enrollment remaining at its level or increasing.
Cindy, does that also include prorating that proportionately if it decreases but still has an increase?
I think she said up to.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion at this point? Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Mark. Any further discussion?
Well, I will, the reason I'm struggling with this is I would like to go back and just take a look at where we were in our capacity at the middle school going back three, four, or five years ago, and kind of relate that to our staffing requests. I just, you know, this number for the middle school every year bounces around. And having sit on the facility's task force, I don't recall where we were with our numbers at that time. And I'm, I'm concerned, at this juncture, we're week, two weeks into the school year, and we're getting a request for two and a half positions. I guess that concerns me. I would have liked to have maybe seen this on the radar screen a little earlier. And I don't, you know, if we go through the process of hiring, we're in the middle of September. By the time we go out and interview, solicit candidates, tender offers to those candidates, where are we, the 1st of November? So I'm assuming that it would be an interview process. And then I then also wonder what's out there in the pool for candidates at this juncture to fill those positions.
I'm just, you're pointing about, you know, not seeing this, I guess, sooner, but I mean, my understanding, these are, you know, these are the kids that showed up that first week. I mean, when, you know, you have registration, you got, and you're given numbers. And, you know, I'm sure Mr. Koch and his staff work with that, but, you know, this is as of 9/6/07, which was, what, the third day of school, or second day?
Third.
Anyway, pretty close. So I'm not sure there'd been any way that this could have been predicted.
This was not the projected enrollment last spring when we approved staffing. It materialized gradually over the summer and later in the summer and the first part of the school day, school week.
One of the things we can't predict that becomes very difficult for us is how many students will not show up for school. So we can take how high our numbers may go with registrations, but that may be an inflated number. So particularly at the middle school level, it's important as we get into August to wait and see what happens. The first day of school, they had 11 new registrations they had not heard about. And that kind of continued through August, and then it was a matter of how many students are actually not going to be there. So that's why we were not able to predict with any better clarity, Dick. My, my concern about not staffing, again, is about the learning of these students and helping to support that. I know that we can offer one-year contracts, or through the end of this school year, so we are not bound to continue those individuals. It gives us a look at an individual who may want to continue in the district. But certainly, your point about hiring at this point in time is more difficult than it is earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Just a good question for Nancy. When do you anticipate, or when would you think that the earliest that somebody would be on board? Is 1st of November out of the question?
Okay. It, it could be accelerated. I think it could be sooner than the 1st of November. The administration at the middle school is in the process of putting together a schedule and verifying exactly what proportion of the 2.5 we would need at this time, and then also looking at second semester when we have more control over the schedule at that time. So we would accelerate, we'd expedite as, as quickly as we could. We do still have candidates who applied for other positions or, or applied for positions that didn't exist but indicated an interest in teaching in the Hudson School District, and we certainly retrieve that material as well as post. It's not easy, though, and I agree with you, Dick. It's not, not easy.
Yeah, it's just not a good scenario. I just, and again, it's strictly my opinion.
We wish we weren't in this position, but the alternative is not a good one either.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
We have one opposed. Okay. Thanks for that report, Nancy and Barbara. We'll move on to the resolution to ensure district property and the local government property insurance fund. Tim, just as a reminder, we're coming up on the, on our cutoff time here, so if we go beyond the 6:45, then we have to recess and come back. So do you think we can get through this fairly?
Well, I think this will take about 60 seconds, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
In front of you, on page, on page 41 of your book, there's a resolution to ensure district property and the local government property insurance fund. And this really is just a housekeeping item. The local government property insurance fund has asked all districts to update their records, and we have insured our buildings with them for many years. And, and so this is merely a formality to update their records.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments for Tim? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of this resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's approved unanimously. I don't believe we have any citizens' requests to speak that I'm aware of, so we'll move on to adjournment. Yes.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Cindy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We now adjourn, and I encourage people to come back at 7 o'clock for the beginning of our annual meeting. Thank you.